All right, everybody. The regular business meeting of the Community High School District 128 for Monday, February 23rd. If I could ask everyone to please stand and recite the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our umbrella in this world with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everybody. If I could ask for a roll call, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I ask you everything? Absolutely.
Steven Archer.
Here.
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 Okay, everybody's here.
Our agenda tonight, brief educational presentation, it looks like, to recognize some outstanding staff members. Nothing really on the president's report, updates from our student school board reps, who are going to fill us in on how we're staying warm in all of our buildings. Superintendent's report, a number of items there. We'll open it up for public comment. It will remind everybody, if you would like to speak, please feel free to do so, but we ask you to limit your comments to three minutes. We will approve the consent vote agenda that was reviewed earlier this month in committee. Updates from program personnel, facilities and finance. I guess a brief update or comment from property, right?
Yes.
Seadolph, Karen, anything? All right. And Jim, anything?
One quick thing.
One quick thing from the Illinois Association of Schoolboys. All right? So relatively straightforward agenda this evening. Okay, educational presentation. We'll have some staff recognition.
Go ahead, ask for me.
Before we do our staff recognition, we had some exciting activity with student athletics and in the world of wrestling this weekend. So, we would like Mr. Eggers to come forward and introduce some of our state champions for wrestling this year.
Not quite state champions.
State players.
All staters.
Come on up here, we're all staters.
Our first man, Mark Dunzing, two twenty-pounder. He plays four in the state last weekend, earned all-state honors. Had a guy that beat him the week before and lost him in overtime for third, so he's like an eyelash away from that. First-time all-stater.
Then our second one, Joey Guthur.
He reached the finals. He has beat his arch rival from Marmion in the semifinals that actually he lost to three times last year. Couldn't have been any closer, three to two, ultimate tiebreaker, but he rode him out and won in the finals. Couldn't have been any closer, he lost to a three-time all-stater from Oak Park, three to two, and it is his second all-state finish, as he had played six a year ago. Joey is going on to wrestle for the University of Iowa next year, and Mark says he wants to wrestle, but hasn't decided. Got to find a wrestling team he likes that also likes aviation.
We have some engineers on the board. We ought to be able to work that out.
Yeah.
Well, Dale, first of all, congratulations, guys. Thank you very much. Dale, as always, congratulations to you. And if you guys don't mind, we'd like to get a picture with you. Dale, come on. Mom, are you good?
I got it.
You know, before our parents, although you're all welcome to state for the whole board meeting if you want, but, you know, we will give you the option to be, and that's okay. But we always like to take a moment and thank all the parents for your work with your young people and having been a former wrestler and wrestling coach myself, I know the time commitment that's involved to wrestle at the state level, and I know a lot of the summer work that you've done, and a lot of the offseason work that you've done, and you've spent a lot of time coaching over years. But we want to thank your parents for their support of you, and we ask them to stand at this point and let us give you a round of applause, okay? Congratulations. Thank you. And now, if you'd like to leave. But we've got some staff to recognize. It'll only take a minute. If you guys want to stay for that, you can see some of our great teachers as well. So, Al?
So, in addition to the student recognition, we have two staff members that we would like to recognize tonight. Diane Naslin and Michael Gluskin just completed, in the last few months, their national board certification. Board to remember that a few years ago, we started that program, and in that amount of time, I think it's been five or six years, we are now at twenty-two nationally board-certified teachers. Both Diane and Michael are in the English Department of Libertyville High School, so congratulations to them.
Thank you.
Can we get a picture with you guys? And I think for the board and the community, as well as our audience tonight, you know, this is one of the highest platforms that you can hit as a teacher, because it is a very rigorous process and requires a lot of self-reflection and a lot of individual time of the teachers. And for the community, again, Alex, it seems like two contracts ago, we worked with the union to develop some incentives for our teachers to apply and some encouragement once they received national board certification. So, it's really great to see that's worked, but we know you're two outstanding teachers, and this has even made you better, and that you will continue to encourage your students and do a great job with your students. So, thank you for your commitment to the students at Libertyville High School in District 128. Just know that we really appreciate what you do on a day-to-day basis. Again, congratulations.
Neither of you have them as teachers?
Yes.
Are you allowed to?
Wow.
Okay. As I mentioned, nothing specific for me on the president's report, so we'll move right to the update from the student school board.
From Vernon Hills High School with activities. This past Saturday, we had our first-ever winter fest. We had a student DJ and multiple local restaurants donated tons of food for the dance, and it ended up being the most successful winter dance that we've had in our school's history.
Oh, okay.
So, we're very proud of that. In addition to that with sports, the only spring sport that has started so far is girls' and boys' track and field. They're having practices right now indoors, and occasionally runners go outside, temperature pending. With boys' basketball, they just won their prayer division, which is a school accomplishment, the first ever in Vernon Hills history as well. Girls' basketball is traveling to Antioch tomorrow night for the first sectional playoff game. And that's about it for sports.
Okay. Music department, hi. Okay, so Vernon Hills Orchestra just announced that they're going to be going to Cuba next year for their spring break trip, which is super crazy awesome. Also, something to note is that our all-state honors junior, Zach Hirszenberger, has been selected to sing the Star Spangled Banner this next year's IHSA State Girls' Volleyball Tournament on November fourteenth, which is a huge honor, and he got that based off of his audition at our all-state honors tournament, or all-state honors conference. So, it's super cool. Yay, thank you.
All right. So, for Libertyville on the academic side, for seniors, as many of you know, it's college decision time has started coming up, so many students found out about their UIUC decisions on February thirteenth. So, students will probably be deciding at the end where to go once they've got all their decisions back at the end of March, start of April, and April is going to be a very busy month for the seniors of both LHS and VHHS. Second semester is winding up, and with that comes exam time. So, for our upperclassmen, that's AP exams. For the juniors, that's ACT. I think that's coming this Monday or Tuesday. So, it's a stressful time on one hand, but it's also an exciting time to see kind of the culmination of six or seven or eight months of learning kind of progress into something tangible or something different that is also tangible. And then, one fantastic honor we found out about today, actually, congratulations go to LHS senior Sean Duffy, who qualified as a national semifinalist for the United States American Physics Team. If you remember, a few years ago, Mei Yang, when she was a senior here at LHS, she actually made the national team. So, there was a regional competition that everybody who was an AP physics student took about a month ago. Sean Duffy is the only senior from LHS, the only student from LHS actually to qualify for the semifinal exam. He will take the semifinal exam in March, and then the top twenty scorers on that exam are the national team. So, he's one step away from a very big honor, and he's already made it to a very big honor.
All right. So, this past weekend, we had our turnabout, and the theme was Candyville. There was a lot of fun. We had, like, basically like a really cute candy bar with, like, lots of assortments, and then, like, sort of like a little lounge, and then, of course, the photo booth, which was awesome. We had, like, cute little props, and just, it was a really fun time. There was a really nice, just like, emcee and all of that, just made it for a really great time. Student council did an awesome job with that. Also, we would like to let you guys know that Best Buddies Carnival is coming up this Saturday, well, sorry, Saturday, March seventh. And, oh, this Saturday, actually, and then Best Buddies Prom is March seventh. So, those are two really exciting events a lot of kids like to get involved with. NHS is volunteering for the Best Buddies Carnival, so we'd like to get the whole school involved. Also, the coming back to turnabout, the assembly was really fun. There was a great, like, lots of fun, like, walk-in videos. We had games and, like, trivia, and then, of course, the crowning of our turnabout king, Grant Dean. And then, also, the freshman sophomore play is coming up this weekend, and that will be the complete history of America, and I've been told it's sort of like Jon Stewart and Stephen Colbert, so that should make for a really fun event.
Just a quick note on turnabout. I think somebody mentioned that we sold over nine hundred tickets this year, which means that attendance is up for both homecoming and fall and turnabout, which is great to hear, and it's good to see at the actual dance. And then, finally, to round out with sports, and obvious congratulations to our IGSA state wrestlers. They finished, they had fantastic meet this past weekend. Joey Guthur second, Mark Dunzing got fourth, and Mark's brother, Matt Dunzing, actually got sixth in the same division as Mark. The LHS swim team this past weekend placed second at sectionals. So, unfortunately, as a team, they will not go on to state, but we did have individual qualifiers, specifically Matt Harrington, a senior LHS swimmer qualified individually. He's ranked both on the state level and the national level, and he should be attending Princeton this fall for swimming. And as we all know, the winter sports season is ramping down, which brings the start of spring sports, so things like track, water polo are starting to wind up so we can get a nice close to our 2014-2015 school year. That's all we have.
Okay, great job.
Let me just say, yours was one of the great videos we saw. I wish, it's actually...
All right, superintendent's report.
Okay, we just keep rolling with the good news in District 128, because we've got such great students and staff. How was that? Was that pretty good? We've worked on that for a long time, that opening. Following students were named LHS February Students of the Month. Olivia Tomasetti, Brian Klimick, Stephen Hogan, Mia Clark, Lola Akamati, Kylie Rodriguez, Alex Hibbert-Brown, Eddie Moy, Ian Nagel, and Ben Arnold. The VHHS WISE team, that's Worldwide Youth in Science and Engineering team, took first place at the recent regional competition held at the College of Lake County. Individual award winners included Lucy Wu, who was third place in biology and third place in English; Ryan Curtis, third place in chemistry and first place in computer science; Conrad Cossage, second place in chemistry and first place in physics; Justin Young, first place in chemistry and math; Kishori Ayer, third place in computer science; Isaiah Lu, second place in math; Nikki Chakrabarti, second place in physics. In addition to the individual team medals, Justin Young took the overall team scorer medal. This is Justin's fourth time taking home this medal. The WISE team advances to the sectional meet held at VHHS on March thirteenth. The team is coached by Josh Ravenscraft and Sarah Staub. The LHS Jazz One band placed third at last month's North Shore Jazz Festival. Diane Phillips, Community High School District 128, Director of Community Education, Grants, Management, and Rentals, was recently named, along with District 128, to the Green Oaks, Libertyville, Mundaline, Vernon Hills, GLMV Chamber of Commerce Member of the Year. The honor was presented to her for providing unparalleled support of the GLMV Chamber of Commerce by contribution of time and talent to grow the chamber, including supportive chamber events and service on committees. Phillips served, received the honor at the GLMV Chamber of Commerce 2015 Annual Dinner, a starry, starry night, held January twenty-third at Independence Grove in Libertyville. In addition to her honor, Phillips was also sworn in as vice chair of the Chamber Board at its January thirteenth board meeting. District 128 has a long history with the GLMV Chamber of Commerce. VHHS junior Zach Hirszenberger was selected to perform the National Anthem during the 2015 Girls' Volleyball Tournament, which was mentioned earlier. Obviously, we're very proud of him as well. Works by the following LHS art students were selected to participate in the IHSAE Art Show at the Jaude Art Center in Chicago. From LHS in drawing, Grace Lynch; in painting, Alessandra Bosler; in digital, Kayla Jean; in 3D, Amber Hedgewood; in photography, Veronica Torello; from VHHS in drawing, Sophia Yufa; in drawing, Alex Kenderman; in painting, Louis Reggie Castro; in photography, Evan Yao, Ivan Yao; and in digital art, Kira Gargan. The show exhibits the best of the best of current Illinois high school students. And three VHHS science teachers were selected as presenters on the national stage for this year's National Science Teachers Association Conference scheduled for March in Chicago. Congratulations to Sarah Staub, Shannon Ettnier, and Shannon Ettnier, who will present inquiry labs for high school chemistry, and Chris Wolfe, who will present using interactive technology to engage and assess students. So, congratulations to all of our students and staff on another outstanding month. Next on the superintendent's agenda is digital learning strategy, and just for the community's information, if you're following our board meetings, last month, we had an extensive presentation and discussion about digital learning strategy in an effort to put technology in our students' hands to enhance teaching and learning in the district. We had a follow-up meeting at our last board committee meeting series on that, where we did some further digging and discussion based on some research that staff had done, and we had recommended to the board that we purchase a thousand initial machines for our devices for our students to use, and we have several staff members, the goal is one in each department, to pilot the initiative this spring. We'll be back to the board in May with data that we've collected and have a further conversation about the possibility of expanding the program. The dollars for this particular program are in the neighborhood of $450,000. We were able to really leverage suppliers to get a great price at an educational rate on those machines. Will require no new district dollars. We will reallocate existing budget dollars to make that happen, and when we come back with a proposal to, if we come back with a proposal to expand that process, then we will need to build those resources in the budget as we move forward. So, thanks to all the staff that worked on this, including our teachers at the point, administrators, our technology department, and for the board for another great discussion about an important educational initiative over a couple of meetings. We appreciate always the board's support. So, we'll look forward to that follow-up a little bit later in the year. Lancaster detachment ruling is next. The board is aware, but the public may not be, that the Lancaster subdivision, which is north on Oak Plain Road, is the first subdivision on the north end of our district and District 68, which is Oak Grove, and they had filed to detach from Woodland Elementary District and Warren Township High School District. Al, it seems like a number of years ago, but it was probably about a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago. The four districts challenged that detachment. That starts at the Regional Board of Trustees. We prevail at the regional board level. The Lancaster petitioners went into Circuit Court. The Circuit Court ruled that they should be allowed to detach into District 128. We appealed to the Circuit Court appeals, or the Court of Appeals. Unfortunately, the Court of Appeals also agreed with the Lancaster petitioners. We appealed to the Illinois Supreme Court to hear our case. We were notified about a couple of weeks ago that they were not going to hear our case this year, so in effect, the decision has been made, and the Lancaster subdivision will now join District 128 and Oak Grove District 68. We are already enrolling students. We think we'll be in the neighborhood of eight to fifteen students from that subdivision at Libertyville High School for next year. Oak Grove is doing something very similar. As the board knows, that has several implications for the district. One, it has expanded the northern end of our boundary in the district, and it has also put us in proximity to other contiguous districts that are currently outside our district in the tax, in the tax implications. Moving forward, what will happen is Lancaster, a year from now, will become part of our property tax base. The board will need to have a discussion about whether to capture that as new growth and the opportunity that we have to get that, or it's just going to continue as regular property at that point. In addition, any bond obligations that the property owners had as members of the District Woodland Fifty-Six, Woodland Fifty Board, or Warren Township High School Board, will follow the taxpayers to our district and will be spread out among all of our taxpayers. The good news is that doesn't appear to be a very high number at this point. We'll be able to put a dollar figure on that, Yas, I think, at some point down the road. But we will have one year where the students are attending District 128 and Oak Grove, where we are not receiving tax dollars from them. The reason for that is, as we all know, property taxes work a year and a year. Warren and Woodland have already levied property taxes this year for next year, so they will receive the property taxes next year. We will levy for the following year on those properties, but we'll have a one-year window in which those students, the properties are not providing any resources to District 128. Again, it's a relatively small number of students that will be attending our district at this point, and it's not a super-large subdivision. From time to time, we do get detachment petitions. I think probably in Alan and Pat and Alex's time on the board, we've had a couple of detachments on the south end of the district, and we will continue to work through those with our fellow districts. The one thing that we have done since our last update to the board is, we've worked with a couple of legislators and our school attorneys to tighten the language up in the statute to further prevent a court from making a detachment decision based on the financial health of District A versus District B. That's currently not in the statute, and that is not a statutory reason that either a regional board or a court should allow a detachment. However, the court made that ruling. So, we've tightened up that wording, and we have two legislators that have been willing to sponsor that bill, so it was submitted as a shell bill, and we will work with legislators to move that forward, because every school district in the state, certainly in the metropolitan area, where school districts bump up against each other, that will be a concern for the districts that are losing tax base, as well as those districts that may be taking more students on, and they have facilities to do that. The one question that I've received from several people is, what would happen if a subdivision or a couple of subdivisions came in the district, and we did not have space at Libertyville High School, for example, or if you want to come on the south end of the district, at Vernon Hills High School? The answer to the question is, once a detachment decision is made, that's our problem. So, whatever we would need to do to house those students, in other words, that is not a reason to exclude the detachment. So, that could have pretty substantial ramifications for districts that are operating, you know, right at capacity or a little over capacity, and figuring out what they would do with those students moving forward. So, it is a very significant issue, and we'll continue to work with our legislators this spring, I think, really with bipartisan support, to tighten that language up in the statute to make it much more difficult for the courts to make a decision to grant a detachment based on the perceived or real financial, greater financial health of one district over another district. So, happy to entertain any questions, any additional questions from the board at this time, but we'll have more information as we move along here. Yas, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Just a little bit of information on what the utilized assessment is for that area when the D and S station proceedings started. It was at about ten million, it is down to about eight point three million right now, so they are seeking to decline the assessment.
And will they reassess before we actually get the tax?
I don't believe so, but we know...
Because since that was such a significant part of the court's decision, is there anything we can do to influence that?
I will make the recommendation to reassess it.
Because it wouldn't seem right that the reason why they did that was, at least in part, due to the impact on the property values in that area, and then not reassess it.
And so, what Pat is referencing is, it was estimated in the hearing process that we went through, Al, you can help me probably remember the number, but around a hundred thousand plus would be the increase on the home values for that subdivision being in District 68 and District 128. One, the good news is, that shows the power of the perception of the quality of schools. Although, we believe that Woodland and Warren do a great job, as they demonstrated through the hearing with the kids that they're serving in their district, so that's certainly not disparaging them in any way. We have a great deal of respect for the high-quality work that they've done with their students. But what it does is, it raises their home values over a period of time. Once that catch catches up and that becomes more common knowledge, that those homes are now in District 68 and 128, those home values will go up. So, really, the connection I think Pat's trying to make here is, those home values are going to go up, and they're going to rise over a period of time, as this becomes, you know, more common in the real estate industry, and as a result, their property base, their tax base should be higher as a result of that, i.e., you know, we should try and push, nudge for reassessment, probably at different points, to capture that additional value of those homes, so...
And again, I understand, it doesn't mean their taxes are going up, it all depends on the rates and all that other stuff, but again, they just should be assessed or whatever.
So, again, look at, go ahead, Karen.
Also, maybe mention that, you know, the students, now that decision's been made by the court, they, there's not a choice for them, and they can't...
Right, that's a great point. There's no provision in the statute for those students to state-put. In other words, if a student was a fifth grader at, you know, Woodland Elementary School, and the same family had a junior at Warren Township High School this year, there's no provision for them to state-put and, let's say, finish, or maybe an eighth, a seventh grader this year in an eighth grader middle school. There's no provision in the statute to allow that, so those students will come here. I suppose the local districts could make an exception to that. I don't believe from my conversation with the superintendents and their conversations with the board that that's likely to happen, but the statute certainly does not allow that to happen, so somebody could not argue, you know, kind of go back and...
Senior year.
Yeah, and say, okay, let me finish my senior year, because the decision actually is effective July one. The reason we're enrolling students now is because we're in the course selection process, and we're starting to run numbers for initial staffing projections, and obviously, we want to have those students in the mix, so to speak, so we know what we're dealing with moving forward. But it looks like a pretty small, relatively speaking, a pretty small number of students. If you're familiar with that area north on Oak Plain, Regency Woods, which is on the east side of Oak Plain, is the last subdivision right now that's in the district, so just beyond that is Lancaster subdivision, and if you remember that area, if you go to the west side of the street, just north of there, there are several subdivisions moving up. And if you're also familiar with the kind of area north on River Road, Daybreak Farms also bumps against the district up on that, kind of the north, straight north part of the district, and then you just kind of work your way around down to the south end here. So, it's important stuff, so it's important that we monitor that, and we attempt to do our part to strengthen that legislation, so we don't have the courts redrawing school district boundaries. Makes it very hard to budget and also very hard to provide services to students in districts that may not have the facilities and the resources to do that, so... Okay, all right. You have in your package tonight, two FOIA acknowledgements, and there are a couple of, we want to acknowledge a couple of folks that have provided some donations to the district. The Goodman Family Foundation... Regency Woods, which is on the east side of Oak Plain, is the last subdivision right now that's in the district. So, just beyond that is Lancaster subdivision, and if you remember that area, if you go to the west side of the street, just north of there, there are several subdivisions moving up. And if you're also familiar with the kind of area north on River Road, Daybreak Farms also bumps against the district up on that kind of the north, straight north part of the district, and then you just kind of work your way around down to the south end here. So, it's important stuff. So, it's important that we monitor that, and we attempt to do our part to strengthen that legislation so we don't have the courts redrawing school district boundaries. Makes it very hard to budget and also very hard to provide services to students in districts that may not have the facilities and the resources to do that. So, okay, all right. You have in your package tonight two FOIA acknowledgements, and there are a couple of, we want to acknowledge a couple of folks that have provided some donations to the district. The Goodman Family Foundation, we want to acknowledge receipt of $4,000, of a $4,000 grant from the Goodman Family Foundation in support of the drug and alcohol prevention programs at Libertyville and Vernon Hills High School for Semester Two of the 2014-15 school year. This grant was provided to us on January 15, so we're very appreciative for our continuing work with our students in drug and alcohol prevention. And Mr. James Monahan, we want to certify that Mr. Monahan has made a donation of three cameras to Libertyville High School Photography Club. Again, we appreciate that donation. Just a couple of quick others tonight as we're moving along. As the board will recall at our committee meetings, we reviewed the Alliance, which is the Illinois Association of School Administrators, Superintendents, Illinois Association of School Business Officials, which is Yasmin and her colleagues, Illinois Principal Associations, which is a professional organization for John and Marina, the principals across the state, and the Illinois Association of School Boards, of which we are a member. That is the Alliance. The Alliance has worked for almost three years, very collaboratively with a wide number of people to develop a vision for public schools in the state. For a long time in this state, we have felt that external forces have controlled the conversation in public education, which has also led some, to some unfortunate legislation in the state that guides what we do. This was our attempt to provide a vision and a mission and several high-priority specific goals with some measurable objectives to move toward in the future. All of the Alliance groups are in support of the Vision 2020. The governor has mentioned it twice, once in his State of the State speech. I did not mention it in his budget speech, but he has several times across the state. A number of state legislators have also referenced the vision and the work, and that then becomes a platform to start writing bills that will support that. One of those things that's near and dear to our heart is the elimination of unfunded and underfunded mandates in the state, but it's much broader than that. So, we asked the board, as all superintendents across the state are asking those boards, if the board would give us their support. You indicated at the committee meeting that you would, and all I wanted to do in front of the public tonight was to have you give me a head nod. We don't have to do a vote, but that you're in support of the overall mission of Vision 2020, and then I will be coming back to you periodically, giving you updates on the connections we're making and how we're trying to move that forward in the best interest of public education. So, I would just ask the board if you would still be so kind to support this initiative, and we can put us on the list of districts and school boards in the state that are supporting this. So, let me ask it this way. Does anybody have an issue with that or find something that they can't support about that? So, we will assume-
Yeah, I was just going to mention, if anyone wants additional information, illinoyvision2020.org is the website for this initiative.
Yeah, it's really kind of amazing. So, thank you for your support. I will let Brent Clark know, and I essay tomorrow that our board is literally on board with this, and then we'll move forward. And then finally, from me tonight, the board and the community, particularly Vernon Hills' community, is aware that we're continuing to assess and evaluate potential options for conference affiliation, athletic conference affiliation for Vernon Hills in the future and beginning 2016-17. And we will continue to do that. We're hopeful in the next couple of months that, you know, we will have something favorable to report out on, but want to commend John and Brian McDonald, the Athletic Director at Vernon Hills, for their continuing work with me and a number of other school districts. And just to put this in perspective, because I know some of our board members and community members are business people, and you are often involved in complex negotiations and complex things in your workplace. If you think about it from this standpoint, something of this nature involves roughly 20 separate athletic directors, 20 or more separate principals, 20 or more separate superintendents, and seven board members at 20 or more school districts. That's 140 school board members or more, who are all looking out for the best interest of their district. So, it's, we have these conversations, very complex. They're good people on all sides who try and work through these things, but it takes time, and it's sometimes very tenuous. So, we're working through several processes right now, and again, we hope by the end of this school year to have, hopefully, something very favorable to report that will leave Libertyville High School and the great North Suburban Conference that they're in right now. Not quite a founding member, but one of the oldest members in the conference, very happy to be there, and also leave Vernon Hills in a situation where their kids can best compete, and they'll be a great member of another potential conference. So, that's our update right now. Pat, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Good update. Anything, anybody from the public who'd like to speak tonight?
Steve, go ahead.
I still held the three minutes. Only one, right?
As long as it's not 30.
It's not 30. No, it won't be 30.
Steve, you're using a little bit, so-
Okay. Well, first of all, as a parent and a community member of two graduates of Libertyville High School and a current junior who, over the weekend, did participate in swimming sectionals and also had time to do turnabout, surprisingly, I want to thank all of you and acknowledge the great job that you do for our children. It's a great educational community, wonderful athletic programs, great extracurricular activities, and you folks do a great job, and I want to just express my appreciation for all that you've done over the years. That's benefited my kids and obviously many others. Purpose for me here this evening is just to speak very briefly on a committee that I have the privilege of participating in. I'd like to thank Prentice and the district for supporting the formation of a pool committee to advise and provide expertise to the district toward developing a comprehensive plan to replace the current pool facility at Libertyville High School. The members of this committee include P.E. instructors, coaches, district and LHS administrators, community representatives such as myself, and design contractors. With this group in place, the committee represents a wide range of interests and experiences in both facility knowledge and aquatic programs that support physical education instruction, competitive high school swimming, diving, water polo, teams at all levels, community Learn to Swim, Cats Aquatic Theater Team, Special Olympics, master swimming, and many other affiliated users. The committee members have already invested time in this project with multiple meetings and site visits. Even at this early stage, I believe the committee not only embraces the significance of this project, but also recognizes the opportunity to develop a solution based on fully assessing needs into the future. The role and contributions of this diverse committee to enhance the planning process in cooperation with the district and the board will be maximized based on us continuing to work together and remaining flexible in evaluating options through a process that is collaborative and creative. It is my sincere hope that the ideas, assessment findings, and recommendations from this committee will be instrumental in creating such a collaborative and creative solution that successfully addresses the needs of all constituents for a state-of-the-art and auditorium facility that will service our students and our community for at least the next 30 years. Although the board property committee has apparently projected some initial capital cost estimates, this has not yet been fully reviewed and considered by the pool committee, and therefore, it is also my hope that the pool committee will have input into the final budget recommendation. Thank you, and I want to let you know that it is a privilege to be part of the process.
Thank you for your help. All right. Consent vote agenda is listed. It was reviewed earlier this month in committee, so if I could ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as listed.
I move to approve the consent vote agenda as listed.
Second. All right. Any discussion? Not, roll call, please.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Dally Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, the next item, educational tour requests. We have 12 of those, too, and they are listed. So, we're looking for an approval on those. And we did get that corrected information, didn't we?
Yeah, wasn't there one, we were talking about the number of chaperones?
There was one, no, this wasn't the chaperones.
It was the cost.
It was the cost. Did we get the correction on that cost?
Yes.
It was just a zero off or something?
Right. The trip in question had the district cost at what was an inaccurate number, to be zeroed for the district cost for the varsity softball team from VHF. The trip cost per student is $300.
Okay. So, then we're looking for motion to approve those.
Okay, so I move to approve the two requests as listed.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dally Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Okay, and there is no other, so we are finished.
Facilities and Finance Committee Chair, Men Batson.
Okay, we have three items on the list tonight. The first is the resolution to establish the budget, or prepare a tentative budget for FY16, and there's actually a resolution in the packet here to be read, so if somebody would like to read that resolution?
Yasmin, you need to read that.
We don't need to read it, but if you'd like, we can establish it.
Can I just read it, or can I just do a stop reading?
All right, I move that we approve the resolution as prepared.
Second.
Just so, to clear, be clear, that the, it resolves to establish the, a budget for the, to begin the establishment of the budget for the fiscal year, and also appoints a superintendent and/or his designate to prepare that budget to be filed with the Board of Education. So, just to be, make sure it was a two-part thing here. So, any additional comments, questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, the next item, educational tour requests. We have 12 of those, too, and they are listed. So, we're looking for an approval on those. And we did get that corrected information, didn't we?
Yeah, wasn't there one, we were talking about the number of chaperones?
There was one, no, this wasn't the chaperones.
It was the cost.
It was the cost. Did we get the correction on that cost?
Yes.
It was just a zero off or something?
Right. The, the trip in question had the district cost at what was an inaccurate number, to be zeroed for the district cost for the varsity softball team from VHF. The trip cost per student is $300.
Okay. So, then we're looking for motion to approve those.
Okay, so I move to approve the two requests as listed.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Dally Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, and then lastly, we are looking to approve the employment of employees as listed.
I'll move to approve employee hire as listed.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lunsford?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Rattser?
Aye.
Arthur?[1644.14] One Step?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Batson?